Seriously, okay, Commissioner Ed Rothstein, it's Thursday, February tenth. Welcome all to open session as we do prior to all open session. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and take a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with priority, Carol, District four.
Thank you very much. I want to start off announcing the new hirers for the county. We have Karine White, Office Associate, Resource Management. Melissa Youngbar, Truck Driver, Roads Operation. Sarah Noor, Constable, the Sheriff's Office. Bridget Tracy, Deputy Family Law Administrator, Circuit Court. Elizabeth Camuti, Assistant State Attorney, State Attorney's Office. Also want to read off a little note given to us by Denise Beaver. With Economic Development, they are pleased to announce Alicia Reford through their department. She is their new Administrative Assistant. All you new hirers, welcome aboard. Mr. Swam, do you have anything for me on the screen to talk about? Maybe South Carol wrestling or we'll do the stroll first. This past week, I did the stroll out there at Deer Park in Commissioners Weaver's District. He let me come out on a tour with them. That was an absolutely wonderful event. It was on the front page of the paper yesterday. Wrecking Parks and the Girl Scouts teamed up with the library to create stroll, a story stroll at Deer Park. What is a story stroll? A story stroll is a unique way for families to combine literacy with physical activity. The pages from a children's book are mounted on panels that are placed periodically throughout the park along the trail. There are twenty stations along the trail, each featuring part of the book. Panels also include activities that families can do to interact with the book. The stroll takes an average family approximately thirty minutes to complete. The first installment in Deer Park of the Deer Park Stroll is Bear Snooze On, which is hibernation, and I feel like hibernating lately in the spring. The next one will be when spring comes. And I want to give a special recognition to the Girl Scouts who built these pedestals for the stories. I was very much impressed with it. This is something we normally see Boy Scouts do, but these girls did it. And that is Girl Scout Troop one zero two three six. And I will read off the names of those lovely young ladies that did their best and did a wonderful job. That is Dagny Beavers, Piper Brown, Brianna Buck, Maria Bernhardt, Rose Bernhardt, Sarah Daniel, Maddie Schiller. They all did a wonderful job there. They are quite impressive. And last, I want to give a special thanks to the ladies of the library who pulled this off successfully. That is Director of Library Andrea Bursler, Communication Director Lisa Picker, Coordinator of the Event Belinda Baumann, and Communications Specialist Amber Foran. And I think the last I have is the wrestling team out of South Carol. There we go. South Carol High Cavaliers finished the regular season twenty and oh undefeated, six and oh in Carroll County, and Carroll County Athletic League Champions. Monday at the Regional Duel Quarterfinals, the South Carol team defeated ACCE from Baltimore at home, and they had a tournament last night. I'm not sure what the results were. Commissioner Fraser, would you know what the results of that?
I do not know.
All right, well, we'll have to, it'll probably be in the paper tomorrow, but hopeful that he won, and thank you very much. Champions down there at South Carol in District four. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fraser.
Well, I appreciate it, but actually, I don't have anything right now. We had the legislative meeting, but I'm sure Commissioner Lance will go into that. Nothing, nothing out, you know, out on one side or the other of the bills, if you know what I mean, or nothing outrageous, nothing too, too, I don't think there was.
Couple.
Well, yeah, but, so I really don't have anything this time, but thanks.
I was hoping you knew who won the championship.
Okay, that was about thirty seconds of nothing. Okay. So Commissioner Weaver.
Nothing to nothing. I don't know.
Okay, well, I guess the bear snores on here. I call Commissioner Boucher snoring there at the one story stroll spot, but they, the library had a great system here, combining with the Wrecking Parks to change these stories about every couple of months, different quarterly, at least change the, up the stories so people can come back through with their kids and go through the trail. And it was very impressive. I commend the Girl Scouts on what they did. The other thing I want to mention, county staff, we have been starting to work on the Veterans Celebration here for May fifteenth at our Carroll County Farm Museum. And we want to invite all veterans in Carroll County to come together just to collaborate with other veterans and to learn about the, what Carroll County offers those veterans. And we are going to be hearing more about that later as we get into it, but we've started to put it together with the Veterans Council, and this will be interesting to deal with. Last night, I did attend the Board of Education meeting.
You have our sympathy.
Anyway, it was interesting. We are going to have a joint meeting with them on the twenty-third coming up, and I, one of the things we have to do is the two boards is simply communicate back and forth of what their needs are, what our budget is, and we need to talk back and forth where we're going to be here. And I did emphasize the fact that, you know, everybody has to be positive, talk through all the issues as a, as a joint board. And I think we can resolve a lot of questions that we all have out there at the present time, so just, I'm done. I won't go on for hours.
Wait a minute, you're done with that? Or you're done with, what, what, what are you done with again?
So you mentioned, you mentioned the Veterans Event, May fifteenth, to allow veterans to let their hair down, and with that, good segue, Commissioner Wince.
Okay, I do see what you did there. I do, I see that.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah. Good morning. Couple of things. First, I'm going to start off on a somber note. We had another, what we are thinking, they're not, technically, it's not been declared that yet, but another line of duty, first responder death, and this occurred in Hartford County. And we want to give sympathies to Wayne Fisher's family. Wayne Fisher's mom and dad actually live in my district on, up in the northern part of my district. And Wayne Fisher, who did pass away at the Darlington Volunteer Fire Department, got his start at the Pleasant Valley Fire Company, my home company. So we want to keep on in our thoughts and prayers there. More to come on that, as is always the case, medical examiner gets involved in that, and we'll see what the rest of that is. But certainly, we want to reach out and say our sympathies to not only Hartford County. And I talked with a guy by the name of Glassman yesterday, what's his first name, Mike? I can't remember, something. Anyway, Barry and I had a good conversation, and he's aware of the, of the connection here. So were you going to jump in?
Well, I was going to say, I know they're talking to the Ag Center and to other logistics here in order to do a ceremony if appropriate, so.
Yeah, I, yeah.
At the Ag Board, that's what they brought up to me.
Yeah, they did make a phone call. I think it's probably going to end up being in Hartford, but we'll see where, but anyway, they're, they're, they're looking at all things there, so that's that. Mako are experts in the room, so I'm not going to say much on that. I mean, there's a lot going on. A lot of bills will be dropping out of the sky over the next couple of hours, probably. Mike, you'll talk about that. We did have a good hearing Tuesday, was it, Mike?
Yes.
On the EMS reimbursement bill. And first of all, I got to thank Chris Swam, because Chris set the room up over there with the county seal behind it, and it was like, it was like, you know, the best thing since sliced bread, so the Swami gets another shout out. But Mike will talk more about that. And I, you know this, Ed, I think, I'm trying to look for it, Governor Hogan declared this month or this week, was it, was it Healthcare Heroes?
Yes. It was this week, excuse me, the seventh through, the end of this week is Healthcare.
Yeah, okay.
Proclamation.
Right. See, see that good picture there? Isn't that amazing?
Of the seal, I see.
No, no, no. Look at the rest of it. Oh, now it's gone. Okay, anyway.
But yes, proclamation.
It's kind of wonky.
One thing that I am very proud of, as, you know, some of us are bringing down a long time here of serving our county, I ran on a couple of things, and a couple of things occurred during the eight years, not yet, but soon to be eight years. And one of those was the unfortunate circumstance of seeing three of our schools get closed. Particularly in my district, that was one of the huge issue up there. We lost Charles Carroll Elementary, which was sort of the, the cement that held that community together. Well, without going into a whole long dissertation on that, March the first at nine AM, we will be having the groundbreaking of the new community center up there. We're going to be sending out invitations within the next day or two, and I'm extremely proud that we're able to see that through. There's been some folks that disagreed with putting anything there. There's been a lot of complications. We worked through all that. There it is. That invitation's going to be going out, but I'm just incredibly proud, and I think that's going to be one of the biggest things that pulls that community back together. I mean, they're, they're to the point where some of them vote in some place, some of them vote in the other, and it's just, it's going to go a long way in that northern part of our, our county being brought back together. So very proud of that, and I hope we can get some really good attendance on Tuesday, March the first. And don't forget Valentine's Day is Monday. I haven't gotten a Valentine's card yet. I'm sure that my colleagues are working on mine as we speak. Thank you very much. Yeah, but the mail gets a little wonky. So hand delivering would be really nice, okay? Just saying.
But I, but I gave you the opportunity to use the word wonky, so.
Exactly, right. So I'll be here most of the day, just saying. Thank you very much.
I have a costume you can borrow on the first.
No costumes for the first. Commissioner Rothstein, back to you.
Okay. Very proud Carroll County's unemployment rate is at three percent. It is the lowest within the state. The state's average is four percent, so we're doing extremely well. Very proud of our workforce development team, formerly known as Burke, along with the high schools and community college all working together in getting our folks employed. Okay, since that is up on the screen, I attended with Audrey, I was very humbled and honored to attend a ceremony recognizing seven unaccompanied veterans that were interred in Garrison Forest Military Ceremony, or Military Cemetery. And those buried are, those there buried, unaccompanied, homeless, and without families. So it was a very special opportunity to participate, and there was a couple hundred there, and that rain did not deter folks from, in attendance, but just very, very good opportunity, placing a coin in respect. Thanks, Chris. As mentioned, we have the Board of Education Joint Meeting coming up on twenty-third, state of the county, opportunity to share our thoughts on February twenty-second, which will be held at the Carroll Arts Center in the morning. And let's see, last thing, I attended the Ag Board Meeting on Tuesday evening, and again, I always appreciate attending, the enthusiasm that they provide to our communities, amazing. We, we just have a great, you know, set of boards and commissions, and for us to participate, whether it's the veterans, the Ag Board, the Planning Commission, I mean, they are just fantastic, I think. And that's why we're so successful in what we do here in, in the Carroll County community. So the Ag Board Meeting unfortunately starts at seven and doesn't get over till nine, but it's a very short meeting. It's a preamble to the Board of Ed, I think, so. Okay, let's dig right into it. Mike, why don't you come on up and let's talk about what's happening down in Annapolis from your, from your purview.
My perspective. Well, first of all, this is so refreshing to be in front of you after so long staring at a screen, how impersonal.
I think that's the first time in history anyone's ever said that about you.
Okay, we didn't need that from the side, okay?
Making me look bad, Tim.
Footnotes.
Comedy relief can stay over there. As you were rudely interrupted, please continue.
So it's never too early to talk about signee die, so we have sixty-one days remaining in this, in this session. We're, we're coming up on about two thousand bills. There are a lot more to come, we expect. Monday was Senate, was the Senate Bill Introduction Day, and tomorrow is the House Bill Introduction Day, meaning any bills that are submitted after that date have to go to the Rules Committee. Then later on in the month, March seventh is the day after which anything is submitted has to have a suspension of the rules. So has to be some, some mechanics done there. And then crossover is on thirty-first, that's a really important day when the bills have to cross to the other chamber. And then April eleventh is confetti day. So the briefing material that I've given you is pretty long today. We're going to move quickly because most of it is really there for tracking purposes. You'll see some dates highlighted, and that's essentially dates that, or hearings that have been scheduled since we last spoke. But the first thing, the status of legislative redistricting, of course, the maps have been passed, the, will likely remain, but we, we know there will be challenges. The challenges have to be submitted by tomorrow, or excuse me, by today, the tenth. The state has to respond to those challenges by next Tuesday, the fifteenth. Then following Thursday, the seventeenth, Judge Getty will schedule a conference to work through the balance of the legal process, but it has to be settled by the twenty-second because that's the candidate filing date. So everyone needs to know what district they're in in order to, to be able to file. We usually talk about the Mako initiatives, what their status is, the highway user revenue bills that were submitted by the governor, really no change there, but I don't expect them to move because there's been a Senate Bill introduced, Senate Bill seven twenty-six, and it has a very long and impressive sponsor line, including the Chairman of Budget and Tax Committee, Senator Gazzoni. So that, you'll remember, we're good up until 2025, and then that's the sunset, and we fall back. So from 2025 and on, we go from one point five percent of revenues to fifteen point three percent of revenues. And also twelve point one percent to Baltimore City, and then two point six go to the municipalities. So that's a really good thing. Of course, amendments can happen, it could be pared down a bit, but that, that sponsor line is, I think is a good sign. No change in the, in the bill that would criminalize threats against public health officials or hospital members. The Senate Bill one fifty-eight and House Bill thirty-five are the fifty-fifty split between the State Board of Elections and County Boards, no change in that. They've been through their committees, but no votes have been taken yet. And then the, the Medical Assistance Program Transport Bill that Commissioner Lance mentioned, the hearing was on Tuesday. I'll, I want to mention that Rob Burke, your Comptroller, is the Coordinator for, for Leadership Carols Day in Annapolis. Of course, it had to be virtual this year and last year as well, so we wanted them to have the benefit of, of seeing a committee hearing, and it just happened to coincide perfectly with Commissioner Lance's testimony on that bill. So a lot of people saw your seal and, and presentation, and I think it went very well. I think it was well received, and obviously, there were no, no opponents to that.
The, the seal didn't stop them from listening to my fabulous testimony, did it, Mike?
Well, that, that was certainly the highlight.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of the two minutes.
Thanks very much.
Under Business and Taxes and Procurement, again, we've had some hearings scheduled for the Family Medical Leave Program. I'll, I'll mention again that the, one of those two bills that is most likely to pass is the Second House Bill four ninety-six. That hearing is scheduled for next week. That's actually sponsored by the Chair of Economic Matters. And then the, the COVID nineteen Occupational Disease Presumption Bill, no change there, still no hearing scheduled on that. Mold Remediation Reporting, no change on that. Hearings have been scheduled for the Discharge Permits Bill, Senate Bill four ninety-two and House Bill six forty-nine, so we have some hearings set there. One bill that's, that's new to you is the Senate Bill five sixty-seven. This would, would allow improvements to agricultural land to qualify for agricultural assessments. There are concerns about non-ag improvements being placed there that might ultimately lead to an abuse of the assessment, the lower assessment. Some concerns about creating an unfair advantage, for example, a farm brewery versus an urban or suburban brewery, that, so the Legislative Committee took a vote to oppose that bill.
That was an interesting debate.
Yes, it was.
Dennis, you were in the room when that occurred. It's a good idea. It looks good to, and potentially it keeps the tax rate at, what is it, 10 cents on the dollar, I think, for, for ag or somewhere thereabout. So, if you do all these improvements, it would still be 10 cents on the dollar. But yet, if you open up a brewery, a brewery, it's hard for me to say, not hard for me to go, but hard for me to say, in the downtown Westminster, they would pay.
They're assessed on commercial.
So, there's, the debate came down to, well, we got to do all that we can to maintain our ag businesses and all that, but I think there's much more to this than just that.
Yeah, I think the intent of the bill, I think everybody agreed the intent was good, but the way the bill's structured, it's problematic, and amendments aren't really going to address all the issues that people have.
Right, the intent is to help out the farmers who are trying to make ends meet. There's no doubt that they could use some help, and everybody would like to help them out. We want to keep the farmers farming. But it doesn't make sense to do that when you put other businesses at risk, because if I can do this over here for 100 bucks, but it costs me 10,000 over here, no one's going to do it over here. So, you're going to take those businesses away from the urban areas and so forth. That's where it has to be looked at and adjusted and so forth. It's just, it makes unfair competition.
It does, yeah. So, anyway, I don't want to carry on it, but Wilbur Levin Good from Caroline had a good debate on there, too. And potentially what he said was, you're losing what farming really means by doing something like this, because remember that most of the crops that are being used in a winery or whatever are not coming from that farm. You're just creating a barn that doesn't have a cow in it anymore.
They're manufactured.
To put a wedding dress in it instead of a cow. So, it's just, you know.
And I have to say, one last thing on that, the really good part of that bill is that if you have a dairy farm, that all your, the buildings and all the stuff you have to buy for dairy farm would be excess of the agricultural rate, which is great. If they could just put that carve out there and just put that part of the bill in, I think everybody would have been for it. But all this other stuff that went along with it was what people were against.
Yeah, and even though Mako's going to oppose, I think in their testimony, they're going to make some of those points that were brought up.
Not quite as well, but they'll try to make them.
Obviously. Perhaps I should tie you in. Also, a new bill that came, it's, it's an old idea, but it's back again this year, and that's House Bill 596 and Senate Bill 783, Constitutional Amendment Environmental Rights. So, establishes a fundamental right to a clean environment. The bill's been toned down, apparently. Still, probably the biggest problem with it is there really no limit on standing, so anyone from across the nation could step in on any issue. It is similar in that way to the, to the previous bills. Apparently, there are a number of states that have taken similar action. The hearing is scheduled in the House on the 23rd, but Mako will oppose that bill for those reasons. Another new bill you heard yesterday, House Bill 547 and House Bill 617. This would require equal access primarily by sight impaired students to the same digital tools as others. So, you think about a software program, something that is, that is visual in nature would have to be made available in some way to those students. The, the amendments that are going to be proposed would limit that to what the ADA standards are, and also would acknowledge the, the changes in annual enrollment. So, if you have to fund to a certain number of affected students in one year, that number will, will most likely change from year to year.
They'll have a formula, so to speak, to determine.
Right, exactly. So, those hearings have, have been scheduled, so we'll keep watching that one. Also, interestingly, on Tuesday as well, in the Senate, there was a discussion on the floor about this Accountability Implementation Board. So, House Bill 633 has been proposed. The discussion was that the Accountability Implementation Board did not have a geographic representation. It was really limited to the I-95 corridor. Now, Senator Pinsky explained that there were a number of, that basically they had to choose from the applicants, and there were really no applicants from those areas. So, it was, it was challenged again by Senator Hershey. So, I think what you see here on the House side, House Bill 633 does that. It spells out that there will be geographically based participation on the board to make sure that we have Western Maryland, Eastern Shore represented there. So, no hearing scheduled on that, but we'll be keeping an eye on that one. One of Mako's prime, primary efforts is always to increase local participation.
Mike, before we go into the local government, bring up one more education bill, House Bill 758. I don't know if you have anything going on that or not, but I just found out about this last night it was. It's a bill that says that if you're a teacher, that beginning of the year, you have to put everything online, about your textbooks, any videos you're going to use, any online websites, any, anything you're going to use, and all your lesson plans have to be online at the start of the year. Okay, it's an absurd bill. It's oversight. I mean, we have, in order to become a teacher, go to college for four years, you have to be certified to be a teacher. When you become a teacher, you have to take continual education courses, eventually you get your master's degree, more continual education courses. So, these people are very, very well prepared to teach in the classroom. But we're going to put all this oversight on them, and the only reason, in my opinion, to do this is to censor what they're going to use. Oh, you put, you're going to use that book? No, we're not going to allow that. Oh, you're going to use that video? We're not allowing that. And you're, and it's the absurdity, to use one of your words, of putting all your lesson plans online? I mean, I taught for 40 years. Weaver taught for a little while, too, didn't you? And I might, what I'm planning to do Friday might change according to what happens in classroom Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. That is ridiculous to put that stuff online. I think as a board, we should write a letter opposing this, because it is ridiculous. And what makes it worse or better, I guess, depends on which way you're looking at it, is that Delga Krebs, Delga Shoemaker, Delga Rose all signed on to this bill. And it is a terrible, terrible bill. It's nothing but.
Do we know why they signed on?
Say it again?
Do we know why they signed on? Was it a party line vote? Was it a complete?
I do not, no. I don't have an answer to that. I just, and like I said, I just found out about this last night when someone, when I saw it, and I, you know, if you could dig into this bill and give me a little more information, I'm pretty positive that what I'm telling, saying it right now about the bill is all correct, but there might even be worse things about it. But this is a bill, people that don't know anything about education are trying to oversee it and censor what's being done. It's a terrible bill. It's a terrible bill. I'm, I'm.
You know, several years ago, Carroll County tried to do curriculum. If you're teaching this agenda, this curriculum, everybody in the county had to be on the same page, same day.
Yeah, stuff like that.
It didn't work. There's too much flexibility, and you need the flexibility. Different students, I mean, there's no chance in that type of curriculum for second chance learning, for all kinds of things. It becomes just dictating what has to happen, and it takes away the flexibility and the variability in students as far as learning styles and the way they learn. And sometimes you have to slow things down, sometimes you have to speed things up. You can't have it in a year in advance. That is like predicting the next snowstorm, how many inches it's going to be and know exactly when it's going to happen.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Fowler briefed us on it, and I'm very curious as to who the sponsors are, because the sponsorship could determine actually whether it's DOA or not.
Well, there's a number of delegates that have signed on to it.
Sometimes it depends on which side of the aisle.
Yeah, and I believe, Mike, I, again, I didn't research that much, didn't have a lot, much time, but I believe they're all the same side of the aisle.
It sounds, it sounds like it's a CRT type of, you know, bill. It sounds like there's a couple of, you know, acronyms out there that people are so against that this is to cut, you know, this whole CRT concept.
And this is a political election year, so.
Exactly, and that's why some of these bills are being dropped, let's face the facts. That's exactly why some of these bills are being dropped. But we, I mean, give us more information on that if we would, Mike, but we should write a letter against it. We really should.
Well, thanks for bringing this up. I look forward to being briefed on it in the future.
There are actually a number of curriculum related bills that have been introduced this year. I haven't followed them because they're not, typically not the bills that we would discuss that have fiscal or operational impact. But yes, they, they are political. I think that particular bill, as, as you noted, is part of the larger national conversation. There are other bills that mandate what has to be in the curriculum in terms of history and, and culture and so forth. So, I'd be happy to bring all those bills to you for, for your review. I'll jump on this one particularly quickly because I don't know what kind of hearing dates may be scheduled.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see that information.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll take a look at that.
You might want to have Mako jump on that one, too, Mike.
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to call on.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if they would get into that discussion, because it doesn't have, again, doesn't really have a fiscal or operational impact on the counties, and certainly not one that from a political, philosophical position.
That's true.
You're going to find much common ground.
I would think Mabe would probably take that up.
I suspect Mabe, I suspect the Education Association would be a pretty strong, MSA is a pretty strong player there, so.
Interesting.
Do you want me to take you off track?
No, 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 that's, that's why we're here. So, into local government elections, so the Election Judges Bill I mentioned last week, still no, no change there. That was, that was heard this week, but, but no change. The Senate Bill 371, the bill that you asked the delegation to bring forward. We had the hearing yesterday, and there were no questions asked by the committee, so I think that one will, should sail through.
I'm surprised it's not going across the board, and it's Carroll County specific, but it just makes sense that the other counties would do this.
Well, in this particular case, the, the state law is such that each county has to be given the authorization to do this in state law. So, there are 10 other counties that currently do these background checks, at least on prospective employees. And seven of those perform them on prospective volunteers. And interestingly, Howard County is the only one that requires for every employee. Their language is shall, not may. So, this is just adding to a group that already exists.
And that's been in place with Howard County for a long time.
Yes.
Because I, I coached there back in the early 90s, centennial wrestling, and it was volunteer, but I had to go through this process back then. So, it's been in there.
It was a little less strict back then, I guess.
No.
Mr. Fowler, you mentioned 10. Is there a breakdown between the charter counties and the commissioner counties and that 10?
It's a mixture.
Okay.
It's a mixture. I think it's charter, it's Baltimore, and Anarundel, and Howard, and then the balance.
I was just wondering if all the 10 are the charter counties and none of them are commissioners. I was just wondering how the authority works out on that.
Yeah, it's a mixture. Montgomery County does it for taxi drivers, and the city of Frederick also does it for taxi drivers. And the balance are a mix of commissioners.
And some sort of consistency and continuity of that statewide would probably be really good.
Yeah, so obviously, obviously it's not an express power because you've got a mixture of counties in there, so.
Thank you.
Senate Bill 352 is the processing of ballots. Again, no change there. Voter rights protection, that's three additional days opposed to that, no change there. Senate Bill 542 and House Bill 451 are bill, bills that would require the prompt payment of grants. There are a lot of complaints that the state grants are not being paid quickly enough after invoices are presented, so that would require 30 days within, within 30 days of the invoice date. A bill we've seen in the past, House Bill 619, creating polling places at continuing care retirement communities, same bill as previous sessions, additional expense and a staffing challenge for the local boards of elections. So, opposition there, hearing in ways and means on the 15th. Senate Bill 541 and House Bill 727 are the result of a commission that was established over the summer that looked at the Maryland, condition of the Maryland State Parks and what could be done to, to make those more accessible and beneficial to residents of the state. The Mako is, is supporting that with amendment that would add funding for county parks as well, and those hearings are scheduled later this month. Under Public Safety, the Body-Worn Cameras Bill, we have a hearing scheduled. Senate Bill 12 and House Bill 129, those are the bills that would, as written, attempt to limit police involvement in mobile crisis teams that respond to mental health crisis. There were some concerns that, that the counties and the law enforcement agencies were already working on this issue to try and achieve that result, but they didn't like the idea of a one size fits all. That amendment has been proposed and accepted. It changes it to minimizing, from minimizing law enforcement involvement to prioritizing mobile crisis units over law enforcement. So, I think that gives the flexibility that's, that's needed in this case. Senate Bill 330 is the, the bill that Senator Reedy has sponsored. His hearing was yesterday, and this would require you as the Board of Health to be a referee or adjudicate appeals that come from the public on actions taken by the Health Director and his staff. Mako did oppose that, and I believe that Senator Reedy and, and Mako are going to continue to discuss the issue. Senate Bill 394 and House Bill 408 is the Stop Act. It widens the scope of who can administer naloxone and requires public and private health providers to dispense that free of charge under certain conditions. The change there is we have a hearing scheduled on the House side later this month. And then House Bill 47, criminalizing, obstructing, impeding official proceedings of legislative and executive branches that was initially written to cover the state government. The amendment is to request include counties, no change there. A new bill you heard yesterday, Senate Bill 630 and House Bill 706, creating an Office of Resilience within the Department, the newly created Department of Emergency Management. That'll establish that office within emergency management, act as a hub for emergency planning efforts statewide, will help react when federal declarations are not necessarily forthcoming, will coordinate grants for resiliency projects and assist counties in planning in response, and supporting projects that mitigate the effects of climate change. So, a different approach to climate change, dealing with the impacts as opposed to working to try to, to stop the impacts, if you will. Senator Hester is on that, is the sponsor of that, and Mako will support that effort. Also, a new one you saw, Senate Bill 633, this is the Omnibus 911 Emergency Telephone System Bill. One aspect of this is it would enable counties to increase the 911 fees to the level necessary to provide service. You'll remember the previous bill was limiting in that nature. It allowed you to increase, but it was limiting in that. This would, would take away that limit. Also establishes some cybersecurity support for the system, so that's a new bill, no hearing scheduled yet. And then Senate Bill 548 and House Bill 609 is the bill that would establish grounds and processes for the removal of local health officers, sets of conditions under which the county can relieve its health officer. The thing is, there, there are no similar conditions or limits on any other appointed official, so that, that's problematic. Mako is a. appointed officials, so that's problematic. Mako is opposing that, and there's no hearing scheduled yet in the House, but there is a finance later this month. Then the opioid restitution fund, hearing scheduled for that one. Second bill, House Bill 794, is the creation of the opioid restitution fund advisory council, and that would be a council that would advise on the distribution of the state portion of those funds. Senate Bill 637 and House Bill 935, that's related to behavioral health services reimbursement. It would establish Medicaid reimbursement for certain health, mental health services, including peer recovery, crisis response, measurement-based care, and some home care. No hearing scheduled for that. And another new one, House Bill 608, Shelter and Transitional Housing Facilities Grant Program, would increase funding for that grant program. Legionnaires' disease prevention, we've talked about that. Hearings have been scheduled there. Which brings me to the climate bills. And Commissioner Fraser, you mentioned not much yesterday. We went pretty quickly over these, didn't talk about the substance of them. Really talked about primarily the major concern in the bill being the effects on methane emissions on landfills. But there's an awful lot in this bill, even going as far as societal impacts, I think are pretty strong. So Senate Bill 528 is the Climate Solutions Act bill. So this was introduced last year, made, passed through the Senate, got to the House, came to the floor, but there was, it just could not come to terms of agreement on a number of issues and ran out of time on that passing. So the bill is essentially in its same form as last year. There are some changes there. The methane portion of that, it still has, requires that a comparison be made between airborne methane measurements and the ground-based measurements that the county takes. And if they are, I think, out of sync by 25% or more, there has to be a study done to determine why there's that wide of a discrepancy. But the real problematic part comes in that MDE must establish the California standards as a minimum, starting in 2024. So I'm really not prepared to speak to the details on that. I think that really needs to come from the public works folks, but that's one of the issues highlighted by Mako to try to deal with.
Doesn't the General Assembly produce a lot of methane?
No question there. We talked about one bill either week or last week that went to the state's portion of school funding, and if you either constructed or replaced a fossil fuel heating system, HVAC system, the state would not pay. These bills all work to de-incentivize the use of natural gas and oil and propane fossil fuels. House Bill 708 is the House, basically a House version. There was discussion early on that it would be an omnibus bill on the Senate side, and it would be broken down on the House side. So the Comprehensive Climate Solutions Bill, 708, is generally what's in the Senate bill. There are some differences. It does specifically direct utilities away from natural gas, promotes heat pumps for residential space heating. Doing that will require substantial electric grid investments by the utilities. No question there. If you're transitioning to a completely electric society, it's going to take some significant electric grid improvements. House Bill 831, reducing greenhouse gas emissions in commercial and residential buildings. So this outlines new energy efficiency standards, has the same sponsor as 708, and it has its hearing later this month.
I think the real irony in all this is it's going to take a whole lot of fossil fuels and their power plants to create this clean electric energy.
Yeah, it's a complex way to approach this. You're really talking about what's going on in Maryland, but Maryland is not an island. Maryland gets a lot of its power from Pennsylvania and states to the west, the Ohio Valley, which have a lot of coal-fired plants. We've always, there's, the Clean Air Act was focused a lot on air emissions, and a lot of our air emissions come from prevailing winds from the Ohio Valley. But we do import a lot of electricity. It's not necessarily solar, wind, or nuclear, or hydro, renewable, in other words.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So this is going to be a challenge. So when they talk about net zero, they're talking about, they're including offsets in that as well. So you work to make your emissions clean to offset what's occurring outside. So again, it's a complex.
It is complex, and it is, but is it easier to try to put standards and regulations and whatever else you need on a power plant, one power plant, which you can work at and change the emissions and so forth, or 10,000 different things out here? It's easier to do the one here and make sure it's abiding by the Clean Air Standards than all these 10,000 over here, which a lot of people, that's just like when Cadillac converters first came out, people were modifying their cars so that they didn't work. A lot of people take their home heating stuff and they modify them. So is it easier for the government to say, this power plant has to put these scrubbers in and this other stuff in, so the air, the, what the gas is coming out of here are much cleaner, or 10, 20, 30,000 different homes? That's why this is done like this?
Well, and there's, but there is a difference between emissions of particulates and greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, yours is, too, is, right. But it's all being looked at, though.
Yes, yes. And that's why the emphasis on natural gas and propane is greenhouse gas emissions.
Right.
Because a lot of coal plants have converted to natural gas, which has led to a reduction in emissions.
In the particulates, right.
Right, in particulates, and greenhouse gas emissions as well, because cleaner burning fuel.
Yes, it is.
But these bills are, yes, these bills are, though, going to move away from that.
You made a good point. And I try to give the analogy of this climate issue as if we're all in a bucket, and each municipality or state drills a hole in the side of the bucket. And no matter how high Maryland decides to drill the hole in the bucket to make sure the bucket fills up to that point, if other states and jurisdictions drilled a hole in the bucket lower, it will never rise up their standard, because we're talking about air is fluid across all these states and jurisdictions. So unless everyone has the same hole in the bucket, we never truly reach the objective that we want individually as a state, because if Pennsylvania has the hole drilled in the bucket lower of coal, it's always running out. We'll never reach the point that we as Marylanders want to achieve.
It's a terrible analogy.
Well, it's terrible.
I think it's a very good analogy. It nails it.
Well, it's all debatable. I mean, I could debate the fact that promoting heat pumps is not the best thing. Heat pumps in this climate here in Maryland are terrible, and we're promoting them.
And they draw more coal-fired furnaces.
And they draw a heck of a lot of electricity, and they don't heat when it's 20 degrees out. Your heat pumps are jumping off their pads.
Constantly running.
And, yeah, so I would, I mean, my point is, this is all so, it's arguably complex.
It is.
And I don't know that any bill is going to get us to where we need to be. So I wish them the best, but.
Yeah, and I do find puzzling that the intent is to affect, is to affect climate change itself, is to affect global warming.
Right.
And.
Will this regulate China?
Well, the interesting thing is, they quantify the goals very, very clearly, but they never quantify the effects on the climate, so.
Yeah, how do you gauge it?
Exactly, exactly. So be that as it may, that is the direction we're heading. So, I mean, the bill does establish funding to try to make this transition. Employment and retraining is a large part of it. But again, it's very, very comprehensive and forward-looking, because the ultimate goal is to reach net zero. In other words, either zero greenhouse gas emissions or through offset to achieve zero emissions by 2045. So all of these bills are consistent in that goal. I thought the most creative title was Senate Bill 552 and House Bill 695, the Better Together to Save Our Weather Act of 2022. And I keep hearing that climate is not weather, so I'm not sure why we're conflating these two terms.
Because climate doesn't rhyme.
The problem here, now, I should back up and say that, consistent with last year's approach, Mako will support these bills with amendments. So that gets Mako a seat at the table as the discussions will continue through the life of the bill. But this bill is being opposed because it is pretty onerous. It requires all the counties to develop their individual climate plans on a pretty tight timeline, a very extensive list of items that need to be included, really beyond the capability of many counties to comply with this. So we'll be opposing that one pretty strongly. So I know I'm only supposed to be taking 15 minutes. I wanted to have that climate discussion a little deeper, though.
It was one bill that, I think it was pesticide regulations. They wanted to change from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Environment.
Yes.
It was killed.
Where is that? I mean, I hate to say it, but the Department of Environment won't have a clue what you're talking about on some of these things.
Yeah, I think there were two bills proposed similar to that, to transfer oversight. Let me look at that one specifically when I leave here.
Just find out.
I want to go back to page seven, Senate Bill 633, the Public Safety 911 Emergency Telephone System. I'm really looking forward to Commissioner Vance paying attention to this and keeping us updated. He's the expert on this stuff, and your opinion is a way heavy on this for me. So please do everything you can in your contacts to keep it on top
As Mike said, it's a good bill. And I don't, I think it's going to float right on through.
Talk about 663, 633?
Yes, 633, I'm sorry.
That hadn't been cross filed yet, right, Mike?
There's no hearing scheduled.
No.
But I suspect it'll go through, so.
Somebody's been following it forward, though.
Any other questions?
Nobody gets me.
Because I've got one last one. Locally, the bill that was put in by one of our delegates to tweak, tweak our compensation, if you will, assigned yet? And where is it?
Hearing on the 17th, Senate.
Okay.
That was, that was submitted by the senators.
So it does have a Senate bill, right? Yeah, okay.
In Education, Health, Environmental Affairs is where that bill falls.
And we had discussed going at it with a code, looking at it from a code challenge, a state code, okay?
Correct.
And we're doing that. Okay.
Mike, last year, the legislature enacted a police accountability and charging legislation that made all the counties set up these two boards, an accountability board and a police charging board. They were going to, for lack of a better word, provide some oversight on the disciplinary procedures and actual charging done against local police officers.
Those Police Standards and Training Commission.
Yes. The Police Standard and Training Commission was going to issue regulations to guide these local bodies, and they announced that they weren't going to do that by the July deadline. Is there anything happening down there?
Nothing that's being discussed publicly. And I don't know if you've heard among any of your colleagues anything on that. But the law still requires you to form those committees and to have them in place, but there's no disciplinary matrix, for example, for law enforcement to use, because that's also within their charge, so.
Well, our attorney obviously has a concern about this, correct? How to implement it and the logistics of it.
They're spending all this time on methane when this is a real problem that they've dropped in your lap and, you know.
And you, as our legal counsel, needs direction to help us with this, correct?
Well, I was just curious. I mean, I'm not the only one pointing this out to them, and it doesn't seem to be making any headway.
Well, we had to form committees, but the committees have nothing to do yet because there's no, I guess, standards are.
Yeah, the point of these regulations was to give these committees some expertise as to what they should be applying to these police officers and.
It's ambiguous.
It's not existent. I mean, you're going to have five people sitting around not knowing
It's beyond ambiguous.
Yeah.
Well, which comes back full circle to, we should have some idea of what they would be dealing with, because that gets us to putting the right people in there.
Right, who we want to appoint.
Because, I don't think, well, that's for another day, but I can't, I can't imagine we'll find, it's going to take a while to find people to sit on that. Let me just say that.
Right, yeah, I agree.
But the best is wonky right now.
Yeah, so, so.
The best, say that again, Commissioner Fraser.
He doesn't have to.
Commissioner Fraser said it best, it's wonky right now, and it is.
Well, I guess from, I mean, from a legal perspective, the law requires that a state commission develop these policies in order to guide a governing body to establish the law properly. So if the commission cannot meet those dates, then, then that's where it stands, unless the legislature takes some kind of action. But what action are they going to take? So.
We'll continue to.
We're in a vicious circle here, I think.
You got a lot of homework to do, Mike. You better get going.
Yeah, you give me a lot to do.
What's those potential process and procedures that are developed? Does it need to go back to the General Assembly for approval, or they have the authority just to make them and move forward?
They, the law has laid out the framework.
The laws are within it. Nobody needs to oversee.
So the Police Standards and Training Commission is the state commission that has been given the authority to develop these standards within the guidelines of the bill as it was passed. So their problem is, they can't put all this together in the prescribed amount of time that the bill prescribed.
They can't put it all in a five-pound bag, probably. I'm just concerned that if and when these procedures come out, we have law enforcement officials who are not happy with it in some way and have pushed back, and they'll be looking to us to help them in some way revise it potentially. It can get pretty tricky. It's a very tough subject, just like the fact that probably someone motivated to be on it might have a negative motivation to be on that board. And most people wouldn't want to be on it, so it's tough.
Well, I mean, the law is the law. You're compelled by the law to take certain steps, and they are compelled by the law to take certain steps. They are not going to meet their obligation under the law. Am I right in that assessment?
Yes, that's the pickle we're in.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Interesting time of year.
Okay, let's move on to COVID update. Sue, are you on?
Actually, it'd be Maggie's.
That was Maggie.
Maggie, okay. Good morning, Maggie.
Good morning. How are you all?
We are well, ready for an update.
Thank you.
Excellent. Let me, sorry, this is always a little confusing with one screen to get to the slideshow. Here we go.
Thank you.
It actually works pretty well. Okay, so everybody can see, you know me, I'll be short and sweet, so it shouldn't take too long. So, there we go. All right, so just a quick update, actually, something I skipped. Maryland data is, you know, daily cases are decreasing, statewide positivity is almost down to that magic number of 5%. Hospitalizations are lower. I do want to just kind of remind you throughout this presentation that the I do want to just kind of remind you throughout this presentation that the, the case, cases do not include for the most part, you know, home tests. People are, you know, we're not, they're not included in it, just like we, we don't include probable tests and we don't include those home tests. So just so you know, as home has become more available and people are able to use them to find out that they're positive and act on those results, they don't necessarily, you know, always get a confirmatory PCR. So that just doesn't include those tests. So, you know, they're sort of undercounts. And then just, you know, transmission is, is still high, but the trends are positive. So cautiously optimistic news, I would say. Say this is data through Monday, so just keep in mind, and this has changed a little bit since, since then. But we are now over 20,000 cases, but that's a much lower number since last week's report, so that's good news. Definitely the rates are coming down. Positivity rate is around 10%, I'm pretty sure it's lower now. So that's good, that's awesome. So going down. And deaths, you know, at least we've said many times that deaths do lag cases and hospitalizations. So we still had a significant number of deaths in the past week, hoping to see that going down pretty soon. Oh, I brought back Commissioner Frazier's favorite graph. So you can, you know, just get another chance at looking at it. I wanted to make the point that, you know, so we haven't, as you know, we haven't been able to access all of the data that we normally have for the last few months. And that has not changed, although gradually we've been able to, to get some data through the state. So I just wanted to use this graph to point out that, that cases are still high. So here you see the top, you know, high peak here is 176 cases per 100,000. But in our highest peak in the Omicron surge, it was at Jan, January 2nd that week, we had 967 cases per 100,000. So as you can tell, that would not even fit on this graph or three graphs above it. Really, really that was at astronomical level, it was way off the chart. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, kind of put, give you some perspective on where we are now. So now we're, we're, we're backed down by quite a bit, we're excited. But this past week, full week, the week of January 30th, we just reached the top of the chart. So we're 183 cases per 100,000. So it's still a little higher than that top peak that we see on this chart that we love so much. So I just wanted to kind of give you that perspective. So definitely cases are falling, that's great news. But we are now back, really back into high transmission from astronomical transmission.
That is a great chart.
So here. So yeah, so here are our less colorful, colorful charts here. You know, to just remember, remembering this is really, you know, this is a short, much shorter span of time. So we're only seeing the one surge on this chart. It's just showing us what has happened over the last few months. So, but you can see, we're definitely coming down, which is great. But we're still, you know, at a pretty high, high case transmission level. Hospitalizations are going down, which we're also very excited to see. So that's really, really trending downward and our hospitals, you know, reporting, you know, much less stress. Obviously, they're still taking care of COVID patients, but it's, this stress is, is much, much lower. And here's just the ICU and acute beds all going down. Then just, this is just the, the death, the graph for deaths. So, you know, it gets a little confusing because the numbers that we, we often provide are from one day to one day and it's a little bit different. And then some of the deaths, you know, we don't find out for a week or so, so they go back into the other, other weeks. And so the numbers change a little bit for the last few weeks that we're always adjusting to make sure that they're represented correctly. But you'll see, we're leveling off a little bit here, it's definitely gone down. Not, not as low as we, we hope to see it soon, but it's going down, which is good. This is just a kind of a, just a reminder from last week again, that, you know, primarily we're seeing the deaths that we're seeing are people who are not fully vaccinated. We do use that term, not fully vaccinated, to be, you know, the most accurate because we would include anybody who had one vaccine, but for the most part, all or, or almost all of those people are completely unvaccinated. So really, unvaccinated is a better way to think of that group. And then you, you know, tend to see that, continue to see that the majority of people who are younger who are passing away from COVID are unvaccinated. This is just the same graph from last week, just to remind you that there, you know, the vaccination, how, how important vaccination is in preventing deaths from COVID. Just little vaccination update where, you know, we continue to climb a little bit. You know, our vaccination clinics are not super busy right now, but we continue to see people getting their first, second, and booster doses. There are a few people who have contacted us who are immunocompromised, who had a, a third primary dose. If, if you might remember, that was really to allow their bodies to kind of catch up with the rest of us who've had a primary, our primary series completed and just allow them to reach the same levels as others. It kind of took them in that extra dose to complete their primary series. And so now the CDC does recommend that they get a booster like the rest of us. So, so those folks are eligible for boosters if they've had their primary series was finished five months ago. Here's just our vaccinations. We, we changed this from one dose to fully vaccinated, since I know a lot of folks are looking at that. Again, that still means fully vaccinated. We don't have an easy way to include the booster doses in the data that we get. So this isn't up to date, as CDC would say, it's just fully vaccinated. But that is, you know, certainly indicative of people who are, you know, who are at least fully vaccinated, one or two vaccines, depending on the brand. So these numbers continue to creep up, you know, looking still at those younger ages to try to encourage those folks to get, to get vaccinated. So as I said, we are down from astronomical transmission, but still in high transmission. And I know that everywhere, a lot of things are changing and mitigation measures are being reduced. I do caution you to see that a lot of them, while they're being reduced, are not necessarily being eliminated immediately. So a lot of the masking and especially school masking is not, not changing right away. Those are, they're, they're, you know, they're kind of just assuming that this trend is going to continue and that they're looking at ending some of those mandates in the next several weeks, not necessarily right away. But right now, our community is still in high transmission and so we still recommend all of those same mitigation measures. You know, we know masks are effective, we know vaccinations save lives, saves lives. You know, we know that, that ventilation and being outdoors and avoiding crowds helps prevent the spread. And we can still do those things to prevent, to prevent spread and to protect ourselves and our community. So that message has not changed. Terms of our services, couple updates. We've now opened all of our vaccination clinics at Carroll Community College for anybody five and up. So just to make it a little bit easier, we do have, you know, some afternoon, evening clinics and now Saturday clinic, clinic coming up next Saturday, I believe, then. So I think it might be, I have to check on the date, but it's, it's, it's coming up. So, so just trying to make this a little bit more convenient for folks. The Ag Center testing is still open to everybody and we are going to be moving back to the Health Department starting on the 22nd because we've had, you know, pretty low numbers. And so we just want to make it a little bit easier for our staff to accommodate. So it'll still be drive, drive-through testing like we did before, but we'll be able to accommodate those numbers at the Health Department. We are still receiving test kits. We did get a batch out to the libraries and they are giving them out this Saturday at their, at all of their branches. While supplies last, we do anticipate getting a lot more in the next couple of weeks. And so hopefully we will be able to give them out through other partners as well. And masks, we're distributing to the libraries, but we've run out for now, so we're getting more of those. But hopefully folks can also find some, several pharmacies in the county are also giving them away. I think this, yeah, does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Coons, thank you very much for your presentation. And that's a nice photo of the team there. I want to look at the Carroll COVID data on the seven-day rolling average chart. The last week of that chart, it shows the fully vaccinated moving up and the not fully vaccinated moving down. I, I want us to keep an eye on that. I'm worried about that trend. Hopefully it's just an anomaly, I'd hate to see it continue like that. So I'm looking forward to paying more attention to that.
So you'll notice.
It happened before like a month ago.
You'll notice that at that. At, at that end, it's one, I think it's one person. So I think that's why, you know, that's, this is one of the reasons it's challenging sometimes to track our data locally as, as important as it is. It can be hard because when we're lucky and when things are going well and our numbers are low, you know, we're looking at very small numbers, so the trends don't, you know, aren't as significant. But you did, yeah, I did notice that as well and I think that's just.
But I was worried about if, if the, the vaccinations are starting to wear out on our elderly population, how much more dangerous is, is for them, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the case. I mean, like you said, it's a minimal of one individual. Fifty-four folks that have died are not vaccinated, 11 are vaccinated. I mean, I appreciate everything that you share, Maggie, along with the entire team. It resonates with those that are listening. It does not resonate to those that will not adhere to the vaccinations or best practices. You can only do the best you can, as we can as well, and share the information, which I appreciate you do on social media and elsewhere. You know, I feel like sometimes, oftentimes, I'm a broken record in saying this, as I'm sure you do as well, because you can only say these are the best things to do. And, you know, now, now the, the sense is, oh, it's about science and science hasn't changed. No, it's about the numbers and numbers have changed and we should have guarded optimism because we're doing the right things overall. We're close to 80% in Carroll County that are vaccinated and we're doing the best we can. I appreciate everything you're doing, but again, I wish I can give you more resources to incentivize those that are not listening to the message that this is the best thing to do and that's to get vaccinated. But we'll just deal with it as it comes, as folks spew their opinions on social media and elsewhere and we just have to deal with it. But as a, a body from the county and from the state, we are consistent in saying that vaccinations are the best procedures and, you know, we are, we are, I think, together in doing this between the county and the state in doing the right measures. So I really appreciate your work with Chris Weinbrenner and others in being consistent in doing that and also the municipalities, because I know you're working very close with them as well. I was at the Ag Center Board Meeting and tracking the same with that and the, the support that they're providing you at the center, so. Okay, is there any comments on this slide?
We've had great support from our community partners and yes, I also wanted to just thank our healthcare heroes, both our, our community partners, you know, our, the hospital and all the facilities that we work with who have really worked hard to, to keep people safe. And then all of my colleagues here who, you know, just to shout out to all of them, those who are actually healthcare workers, RNs and doctors and things like that, and those who have, you know, been stepping up and filling those roles to help continue to provide services, all those services we talk about to our community. So just a chance to give our, a little shout out to, to my own healthcare heroes.
Absolutely, they are selfless workers supporting our community, so thank you. Okay, any comments additional?
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Let's move on to Debbie, why don't you come on up? And we're going to be.
You're the next contestant.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Chris, you going to come up with us on this or?
He is here in case you have questions. Uh-oh, I don't know, I hope I don't do anything wrong.
I don't think you will. We're going to have.
See, Commissioner Frazier laughs because he's seen me like hang up on people. When I have technology at my fingertips, sometimes I do okay and sometimes not.
So I appreciate coming in. We're going to have an update on the federal funding and status and see if there's additional decisions that we need to make in moving forward. So Ms. Debbie, it's on you.
Okay, so, yep, today we'll look at some of the federal funding that you have received as a result of COVID, including a final look at the CRF plan that you adopted, the projects approved to date in the FRF plan, along with an update on the final rule that has been released and new project requests. And then finally, I'll take a quick look at federal earmarks and the infrastructure bill or what we know to date on those two federal sources. So first, the summary on the CRF plan, that ended 12/31 of 21. The county's allocation was $4.7 million and we did fully expend those funds. The additional $4.1 million represented on this chart was granted to the county from the Health Department's allocation. Both the Health Department and the county got 4.7. So altogether, the plan provided 18.8 million to the county to respond to COVID. And this is the final allocation of those dollars. The largest share of funding, 43%, went to your constituents and your partners. So these were business, nonprofit, fire department grants. We, we provided funding to municipalities, allied agencies, and then some programs directly impacting citizens like rent relief. We did iPads for isolated seniors and we did services for homeless. The next slice of the pie, 28% went to safety measures for both staff and the public using our buildings. So this was your lobby redesign, 911 center redesign, HVAC projects, PPE, and the technology upgrades that allow us to do remote, remote meetings and, and remote work. And then the last slice, 29% went to hazard pay and to salaries of, of those public safety staff presumed substantially dedicated to COVID, dedicated to COVID response. And then a little teeny bit for some admin costs like audit. That's the final look at the plan, if you have any questions about that.
The total we have right now that we're scheduling is 15.86 million?
So that's the FRF. So I've got a couple, so this was the COVID relief funding. Yeah, that came in, it seems so long ago, about two years ago, at the beginning of the pandemic during the CARES Act, we got a direct federal allocation, both our, you know, the county and the Health Department. And we spent that madly with, you know, weekly updates on, on COVID response, straight up.
So all of this has been executed as of 12/31?
Yep, spent, done. We're just organizing records and getting ready for, you know, any audit that may happen. We were audited by our auditors, our single audit that came, that was, you know, that, we had wonderful results from that.
Good.
So we'll be ready for any federal audit. So now the FRF money. So just to remind the board of the parameters of this, this is the 32.7 million in direct federal money that you received last spring. We received the first allocation in May. Second allocation will come this May. Grant period runs through calendar year '26 with all funding allocated by the end of '24. And this is intended, again, to respond to COVID, just like the CRF, but then more broadly to stimulate our economy and to support long-term recovery. So I'll just, just wanted to touch on the final rule. We did, we've gotten that, the feds released that a couple of weeks ago. It goes into effect April 1st. I will say there were no huge shifts that impact any of the projects that you have authorized to date. They are all still eligible. But just some highlights, under the public health emergency category, there's additional emphasis on proportional response. They want to make sure that we are focused, any of those dollars, on those most impacted. And then we have a few more requirements around capital projects. I think the intent of this is the farther we get from the initial pandemic and the initial shutdowns, the harder it may be to tie a, a request to COVID. So they want to make sure that these requests are tied to COVID. Broadband, the feds have maintained their commitment to terrestrial service and that 100 up and down speed. They did add a requirement that all ISPs that build with this money offer an affordable option for low to moderate income households. Water, wastewater and stormwater projects remain eligible with some expansion of the types of projects that are eligible under that funding. And probably the biggest change in the final rule is this idea of lost revenue. So we included this in your initial plan. Treasury was allowing jurisdictions to make a calculation of how much revenue they lost as a, as a result of COVID. We had not done that calculation yet, it's complicated. We were going to have someone come in and do that for us, but we waited long enough. And now the feds have, have, in the final rule, will allow jurisdictions to take up to 10 million as a presumed impact of COVID in lost revenue. And I want to just talk a little bit about that. A couple of things, it doesn't add to our allocation. It's still part of the 32 million. And it doesn't mean you have to change your plan. All your projects can still be under the FRF categories. But it does give some flexibility and you could spend up to $10 million of the 32 on general government services. And, you know, as you started to say, Commissioner Rothstein, what's left in the plan is not, we don't have $10 million left. But it would, I would like you to consider that administrative decision because it would give us flexibility at the end of the plan. If we haven't fully spent, then we can spend that on any government service that we would normally provide to our citizens. So just because of that flexibility. All right, so I wanted to give you a look at the plan as it stands now. This is everything that you have approved to date, including the emergency requests that have come before you and the match that we have pledged to the state broadband grants. We've had, we had three ISPs go in for the ten million dollar infrastructure project on behalf of Carroll County and then we had a neighborhood grant. So you have allocated or approved fifteen point eight million in projects, which is just under our first year's allocation. All these projects are moving forward. They're all in that 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 phase of designing the RFPs. Some of of the RFPs have been released. And it was good that our timing worked that way because we got to look at all of these projects with the lens of the final rule just to make sure that everything was still eligible. And as I said, all these projects are fine. So I also wanted to just give you a quick look, and in your package you have a whole list of all the projects that were that were requested. But this is the projects that were presented to you in in August that we did not fund. And I did adjust lost revenue, so then that that follows the final rule and it's at the ten million mark. We had estimated that at six million. So you still have in remaining projects that are not allocated, twelve million towards broadband. And this was your last mile projects to connect citizens, four stormwater projects, two HVAC, a generator project, some projects for utilities, water and wastewater, the bonus for Circuit Court employees, and then the collaboration with Westminster around water supply. I have zeroed out some of the projects because I don't think that we need FRF money for those anymore, but I wanted you to remember they were in the plan. So one was economic relief for landlords. We received four point two million citizen services administering this grant for rental assistance and we think that takes care of that need. The county office space at Penmar, you elected to fund that with one-time county funds. And then the state's attorney fiber connection is in the capital project, so we didn't need it here in the FRF.
If I can stop for a second, the collaboration with Westminster for water supply for three million dollars, I thought that we said that that was for water supply for any municipality that we would collaborate with, not just City Westminster.
I think in the in the original plan, this was the language. I don't know if it broadened after that, but this was the original.
I think it was Westminster specific and that Westminster was going to match.
Right, right.
But we never got past, I mean, I I had conversations with Sykesville afterwards with the mayor and town manager. I'm mean with her again, but we never committed other municipalities in a matching program except for Westminster. So I don't know. I mean, I'm more than happy to do it. I think it'd be great to collaborate with some of these municipalities.
I mean, I don't want to up to three million dollars is that what I'm looking at, but I I thought we had talked about, let's say if Sykesville or or Union Bridge or somebody said that they wanted to put money toward water supply and they had a project and it was five hundred thousand, something like that, if they committed money, we would commit matching money with them as well. And it depends on when the projects came in. I'm not saying I'm gonna take the money away from Westminster, but I thought that was the discussion that we had, we had settled on, put three million dollars aside for water supply as municipalities would come in and and have projects for that. We could match up to up to three million dollars and depends what they were, we could say yes, we could match part or all of what they're asking for.
I think that's expanding the the scope or the parameters of this initially. I'm open to it. I'm personally, I I mean, the more we can collaborate with the municipalities in these projects and do matches, I'm I'm always for, but this specifically, I, from what I recall, was the dialogue we had with Westminster. But if we want to look at it from the eight municipalities and and looking at a a match because they have their own funds coming in, I'm, I mean, I think that's open for discussion. So I don't know what others think about it. I'm, I mean, I have one jurisdiction, you know.
And I'm not, I don't want to take the money away from Westminster. But I know when we talked about this, we had talked about other municipalities might have similar needs. We have a three million dollar in a pot out there. If another municipality said, you know what, we could use, we'll match five hundred thousand dollars because we have this need here. And if it fit the parameters of the water supply thing, they could get five hundred thousand. If Westminster said, we we need all three million, this is why, I I don't know. I don't know what they're gonna ask for. But we did say three million dollars is a total pot, but.
I mean, are we making it too, are we making it too complicated?
It's also still in the unallocated. So the, it's not, it, you know, the board did not choose to put it in the we want to spend this category yet. So it's still in the, we were contemplating spending it. Well, that's that's your decision. I'm just making sure you understand that.
Right, right, right.
You haven't directed to to move it over, so there actually isn't any money in the to be spent column.
No, but it's available within the limitations of this, the FRF dollars. We still have that available to us, to allocate.
Right, ye sort of.
Ye sort of.
Well, well, Debbie.
So I think that, you know, so unallocated right now is sixteen point eight. Okay, so let's just, let me go to the next slide so that, okay, so sixteen point eight is the unallocated balance. I made an assumption here that you would want to continue to leave the twelve million in the broadband allocation. We have not released that. We're waiting for the state to make decisions about their grants and then we'll decide what to do. But, you know, I'm, so I made an assumption. So that only leaves you with four point eight million. So if you took three for water, it just, there's not, there's not very much left. It's surprisingly easy to spend thirty-two million dollars.
Yeah, no, no, I I understand.
So that's where I, you know, we just wanted to caution.
Right, that's.
There there's, and I agree, we are putting a great emphasis on broadband and IT for all the right reasons. There are a lot of opportunities to keep going after grants and state and federal dollars, which we are. You know, and I don't want to slow down that momentum whatsoever. It's it's broadband water. I mean, that's, you know, in in development. And, you know, if we allocate that three million out of that four point five or four point four eight nine, and it doesn't have to be three, I mean, it could be whatever. To entice, incentivize municipalities to come on board and say, hey, we want to do something. We don't have all the funds, but we want to have a matching approach. I I think it's a good idea to go beyond the the borders of their municipalities.
Well, these new requests here, because you were already taking them out. We haven't even discussed.
No, 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 no.
No, not you, what he just said. He took them out of what he just said.
Right, four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, you just said you already took them out. We haven't even talked about them yet. So we're still looking at four point eight million that's left over. And if you go back to the last slide, then we're looking at funding those out of the four point eight. Is that correct?
Any of those.
Any of those.
Right, not all of those. We don't have enough money for all of them, but any of those.
Would also still be in the mix. And that's why I wanted you to see what was still remaining as unallocated. As these are still projects that we looked at originally.
So all of these on this page plus any of the?
Right, and if you're looking at what we had discussed in the past, the HVAC HVAC systems, if you look at them, because better HVAC system, it was, is a benefit, especially when you have airborne COVID or whatever else might come along in the future, let's look at the HVAC systems. And that's another one I just lost it here.
I popped back to the approved because we did, there were seven buildings, I'm moving around. There were seven buildings that you did allocate or funding to HVAC for that reason, that were on the top ten list for DPW.
Right, we've done seven already, but there, if you go back, there you go.
There were still two.
And switch like they want to look away. Yeah, two other buildings here that are in there, correct? That are our buildings.
Yes.
Yes.
Two buildings are there.
It's on your plan. I can look quickly, see who's faster than I am.
HVAC was Burke Courthouse, let's see. Historic jail's being done, Burke's being done. It would be the Courthouse Annex.
They're both.
In the Courthouse Annex.
And the Eldersburg Library.
Who played the subject was brought up about these HVAC investments. These are all tremendous capital investments for us. And it emphasizes the importance of us maintaining all these things and how critical it is for us to have the personnel knowledgeable at the experience to maintain all these systems. Because if we make this big investment in all this mechanical equipment and we don't have the proper personnel, that's a lot to maintain. That we have to have that personnel there maintaining there. All these investments will deteriorate fast for us. Is any of this funding available for us to put towards the personnel to maintain these systems or is that off the table?
I guess technically we could, but the money will end, you know, we'll, we only have money for staff through the end of twenty-four. And we're we're really sparingly, I mean, we really just have a part-time person in the grants office. That's all the staff right now that we've added. Broadband was the other position that you looked at to give some, you know, some support during the grant period.
But in the back of my head, I always hear Director Zaleski say, each time you create a new thing or a building or project, you have to man it and maintain it.
But this isn't, this isn't creating new.
But it's new technology, new systems.
It's upgrading the system that we have to maintain anyway.
What what I'm getting at is there's a constant revolving process of maintaining. And I want to make sure that we have the staff and personnel that are mechanically inclined to maintain all this stuff to keep it at its highest level.
So what are you looking for today?
All right, so let's go back to this slide. So I wanted you to consider the new projects that we have before you. There are four requests. One, it for the sheriff, this would fund PPE. They're pulling some from the stockpile that we created under CRF, but there are some things that they need outside that stockpile and then test kits. And this would be for the remainder of the grant for three years. Circuit Court, we did a lot of technology upgrades in courtrooms for the Circuit Court with the CRF money. This is one courtroom that was not completed. We did get grant money to fund about half of it. They still need eighteen-five to finish that project and that is to allow remote meetings, social distancing within the court.
And that's as a result, the, we put this on the low end because we didn't have that judge at the time. So this is for the expansion of the extra judge, Judge DeLeonardo. Sorry.
Commissioner's Office Website Migration Project, this makes the website a little easier to use as people are using that more with with remote kinds of activities. And then the last request is to fund Stormwater Management Project for the Ag Center Parking Lot. And Chris Hine is here today to answer any questions specific to that project. And they're requesting two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the total in new requests is three sixty-eight five. So we're asking if you want to release any of those projects today. Oh, and then I did want to also just remind you of some of the things that, so Citizen Services, some commissioners, we put that, that RFP went out last week. If we get more requests for Behavioral Health Services, you wanted that to come back before you to see if you wanted to put additional money towards that project. We allocated one point five million. So that's just as a placeholder. We don't have dollars to that. Any funds for future pandemic, you know, when we adopted this plan in October, I know I didn't know how to pronounce Omicron. So, I mean, we don't know what will happen and do we want to have some of this, these dollars sitting, you know, for future pandemic response. And then there is an additional water project that Utilities is interested in and looking at FRF money for. But again, we don't have a lot of details and or dollars associated with it. So just some placeholders.
I I apologize. Where where's that three million dollars one more time?
So it's in the unallocated.
Where, where are you?
So I'm flipping slides. So you have a total of requests, you have forty-three million dollars in requests that you have not allocated. And we have sixteen point eight million dollars left.
And of that, the lost revenue is also what we want to achieve this morning, right?
Only to make the, so I have to, or we have to, in the next report, make the decision. Are we gonna take it or are we not gonna take it? It doesn't mean that you have to change your plan. But at the back end, if we haven't spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, we can put general county expenses to those. It'll let us spend down the entire grant. It really gives you some flexibility.
And it it comes out of that thirty-two point seven.
So this would is, yes, thirty-three million.
So so one decision is approving that piece. And then the second today is to look at those others to whether we want to move forward with those or not.
Correct. Any of the old projects or any of the new projects, right?
Any of these projects and?
And or the new ones requested, yes.
Okay, got it.
I'm a very strong advocate of helping Citizen Services to emphasize the human impact this epidemic has had on us. I'd love to hear a report potentially from Director Steckel, like where we're at before the pandemic, where we're at now, how we're trending. Because I think she has a really good handle on the pulse of what's going on to give us some sort of briefing to how we can potentially help or some of these these resources.
Well, I think when, when, you know, as Debbie said, the RFP was just put out on the street for those additional behavioral health services last week or two weeks ago. And so when that process is, you know, and you're about to award, I think that would be an appropriate time to have that kind of conversation.
Yeah, keeping the public informed because there's so much that they really are not clear on and eliminate any ambiguity on that. So thank you.
And I looked really quickly before I came over at the rest of the COVID money that we've gotten. So in addition to these to the CRF and the FRF, which is about fifty million dollars, we've received another twenty million. And most of that came to Citizen Services, some to Burke. But the vast majority of that went through to aging, to housing, to homeless programs. We've received a lot of formula funding.
The rental assistance.
The rental assistance and and we just, you know, we got four point two million in the first allocation. We'll get another, I think, two point seven. They just sent us the grant agreements and we'll be coming before you to talk about that. So they have received a lot of money outside these plans to do that kind of work.
And I know they're being very creative as well.
Always.
Yep. Okay, so do you want us to take this in two chunks? One is the easier one, which is the ten million dollar lost revenue, accepting to shelf that and kind of, I mean, that's really what you want to do. And then from that, we can have a conversation on the rest. Is that?
Right.
I mean.
Right, you want to recognize ten million of the thirty-two million as lost revenue, basically.
Yes, so that I can make that election and then we have that flexibility.
Okay, so I'll make that motion that we accept that ten million dollars is put to lost revenue of the thirty-two million dollar FRF.
Sorry.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second. Any discussion on that specific item? Seen, heard, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now let's look at the project descriptions of, I guess, these along with those four or five newer ones, correct?
Yes, please.
And I think it's been the sentiment of all of us to keep that momentum on broadband.
Yeah, that shouldn't be touched.
Go to the next page.
Yeah.
I've gotten, I've gotten over a dozen calls in the last two weeks asking where my internet is. So that's a need that has been identified. You are, you guys are debating about this three million in water. We don't even know what that means. We do know what IT means and internet. We have got to keep it in there.
Right, I agree.
So if you switch the page.
I agree, but I'll tell you, water is.
I get the water thing, but I need to see specifics on what that means. Right now, the needs, flip the page once, these needs are in front of us.
Well, it's probably dollars is we we, even here, we've agreed that we're setting that aside. That's going there.
No, at the moment, it's unallocated.
No, no, but we've defined it and we agree. We all agree. There's no singularity. I mean, we all agree that that is a need.
And as far as I'm concerned, these other four are the new requests, I think. We heard the sheriff talk about his test kits and how much they use at the detention center. I think that's warranted. Getting the Circuit Court up to to date is also very important. As a matter of fact, there's a bill in the General Assembly right now that would make us spend a lot of money to do, I think, what we're already doing. So we might be ahead of the game there. I'm not sure what the website migration is. I didn't hear about that other than I will say that I've had constituents reach out to me and say. I'm not sure what the website migration is, I didn't hear about that, other than I will say that I've had constituents reach out to me and say, your website's a little complicated.
Um, so this, this will, I um, I, I, I don't, I'm not the best on this.
I asked Chris if he, if, if he's listening.
I'm here.
Hi.
I'm here.
Not a lot of complaints, but a, but, but
So what would the
Maneuvering.
What would the website migration do for us, Chris?
Back in August, we noticed some issues with our forms. These forms uh, are critical to a lot of the information that we collect from the public. We've used these forms in the past for COVID information, we've used these pa- for um, uh, water allocation uh, pieces. Uh, we use the forms primarily a lot for our PIA requests. They stopped working. Uh, we believe it's because of the current content management system that we use for the website needed to be updated. Uh, in our research, we found that to update that, we had to migrate the entire website to a new version. So basically, like we did a few years ago where I had to move all the content from the old website to the new site. Uh, we're gonna have to do that all again, but instead of me having to do it, uh, the, the Cortegrity will, would be doing that. Um, in regards to making it easier, there will be a lot of new applications along with this new version. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what they are, but I've been told that it's going to be a definite improvement.
That was the voice of divine providence.
Okay, so
I asked, he started talking.
Okay, so where else you want to go with this?
Yeah, typically when you're navigating, it's, it, it, it does, you gotta keep going in steps, Chris. You know, you get to the forms, maybe that's what you're talking about, and then you don't know where to go from there. Because it just seems to me that it could be easier and that's what this would do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and you know, the, 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 another off, off topic a little bit regarding, you know, navigation. We can improve that at any point.
Okay.
Uh, you know, i- if they're, if they're, if you can share some of that information with me.
Oh, okay.
I've had the same concerns.
Yeah, the, I, I mean, I've had people from varying, not only just a couple seniors reached out, but I had a couple other folks say, you know, when you compare it to other county, when you hit on something, you get it. But here, you gotta hit on something and hit on something else and it takes you deeper and it
Please identify those, cause we can't catch them all, so when they're there, we, we can, we can fix those, so.
I've had a lot of contractors, so you know, they try to follow their permitting and stuff on Excel.
Oh, that, that, that leaves the site there, Commissioner.
That's a different stuff, subject. Excel is not our website, that's a different subject.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
It's different.
Yeah, that's
And then the Ag Center Parking Lot, I think is way overdue, that, that has to be done like yesterday, cause it's gotta happen this year.
Gotta happen, it's
Well, this is the Stormwater Management Associated, so there are two parts to the
Right, right. It is, but, but we need, we, we need that funds to allow them to do the things they need to do. Because it is well overdue and it is an economic impact to our county and partnership with the Farm Museum and others. Um, so if we do all of this, it's taking off that other page of our unallocated funds, correct?
Yeah, well, then it reduces, if I could flip back to that, that page.
You have to ask Commissioner Frazier if he allows.
I'm giving you a heads up.
Or just, or just give them the, you know, green light, red light, you know? Um, okay.
So that would reduce, you know, what, the third, and again, if we take out loss revenue, cause it's really, you know, not a separate, you'd have thirty-three million of requests and you've only got four point
Right.
six million dollars left.
But that four six point six million would be eaten up by those other
Good.
if we agree to that, the broadband along with those four projects.
No.
That's
Well, it would, you would still, let, let me move, let me go back to that slide.
I apologize if you go
So even if you kept broadband in, twelve million, you approved these four projects, you would have four point five million dollars left
Got it.
to allocate, you'd still have some.
Okay.
With these, these couple of, you know, placeholders that, that you've talked about.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you would have enough to do to put a three million potentially, water project out
Yeah.
and leverage municipalities' funding, you know.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
Good, that's good. You know, I think, um, no, that, that's great, I appreciate, one, the patience that you're providing as we're going back and forth.
No, it's fine, I mean, I live and breathe this stuff and you don't, so.
And, 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 no. I, I do, I appreciate the patience, I appreciate the clarity that you are providing. I, I believe as um, Mark and his team continue to go after broadband and you as well, broadband grants and opportunities that can also reduce that number. Um, because our governor is pushing a lot onto IT and broadband.
It could be, yeah, if, if those three large, uh, not neighborhood, but the other
The infrastructure.
The infrastructure, if those three applications were to be approved, and we'll know that toward the end of April,
We may free up twelve million.
that would have a huge difference on this, whether we need all of this twelve million or not.
Which is great, so, um, but regardless of that, I think it would be prudent to make sure we put this in place. Now going, so we did determine, you want us to now agree to this?
If you want to approve any of these for new projects, we could, we could allocate those today.
Okay.
And then I would get those projects started, yes.
And I think it would be good to specifically vote on allocating the remainder of the twelve million to broadband, don't you Debbie? Because it really hasn't been allocated previously.
It hasn't.
It's just been, I, sort of a gentleman's agreement that that's where the board wanted to go.
Well, that's okay, so, so you want us to, second topic is approve what's in front of us right now from unallocated to allocated. The five items, is that?
Yeah, and we could always
Okay.
You know, in April, when we know what the state has awarded, and there's more broadband money coming, we'll look at that in a minute with the infrastructure.
Right.
So, yeah, we could get a lot of money from the state.
We're not gonna bet on the check in the mail.
We're not going to yet, no.
Okay, so
You want to take these individually or as a group?
That is totally up to the board, if you feel that you're all sort of, it sounds like you're all sort of in nodding agreement that you're okay with these five.
If we're in agreement of the five, then we could probably just do all five.
Do we need to do the motions on the sheet first in sequence or how procedurally?
We already did the ten million.
So So, do I have a motion on accepting the five unaccal- unallocated requirements and make them allocated at this time?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
So I got a motion, I got a second. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And just to be clear, if I may, for, in case we have to watch this sometime later to see what those were.
Yeah.
They were twelve million dollars for IT broad- broadband remain- remaining projects. PPE and test kits for the sheriff's office.
Yep.
Technology for the historic courthouse, website migration, um, and then Stormwater Management Ag Center Parking Lot Project.
Right, and it was a breakdown of twelve million, hundred thousand for the sheriff, eighteen five for the Circuit Court, ten thousand for the county government and two hundred and forty thousand for land resource management for the Stormwater Management Ag Center Parking Lot.
And that leaves one million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars left, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No.
No, it leaves
No, that four million.
It leaves four million.
No, no, after that's used, there'll still be a million.
There's still
No, it's four, four million.
There's still
Four point four million.
Right.
Oh, okay, oh, oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Because you have not yet allocated anything.
Oh, this is getting better all the time.
So now
I love creating accounting.
There's four point four eight nine million left. Should we go to that last slide to see if we want to, at this time, make any decisions in allocating funds?
You mean, these potential?
Wherever it was.
No.
No, 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 no.
The one back that had the, that one.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, okay, now I don't know where
Yeah, I, I, I would like to put the three million dollars aside of that four point, whatever it was. Um, aside for water projects that we can leverage with the municipalities around Carroll County.
So you're opening the aperture to all municipalities, not one?
Yeah, I mean, we, but it would be up to us to how we're gonna allocate that three million, it could be part here, part there. And it, these are matching funds, so the municipality has to put up their half, basically.
Okay, so
But I, I think they all need, they could all use some help and
Again, I, I don't disagree, it's just you put a lot into it. So, uh, all municipalities, matching
Yes.
fifty percent, uh, you know, is there a, a cap on it or is it first come, first served?
No, well, then, then we would look at it and decide, yes, they could get this amount or, or whatever.
So we could
It also depends how many requests we get, we might not get one or, you know.
I, I, I just want to make sure I understand what you're, what you're asking.
So, so we could reach out to them and lay out the parameters and ask for their proposals if you'd like. And secondly, um, if I could have a bit more of a definition of what you mean by water supply. For example, um, you know, uh, Sykesville, since you mentioned it, does not run a utility. They don't run a water or sewer system, and Carroll County does it for them. Other, um, so are you limiting it to utility, water and sewer service? Or do you mean Stormwater Management? Keeping in mind, the county already has a robust agreement with the towns where we pay for eighty percent of the Stormwater Management project.
My intent, my intent on that is water supply, so Sykesville
Water sewer service.
Yeah, water, water service, actually, I'm not even looking at sewer, I'm looking at water service. That's what I'm, that's my intent.
And just limiting it to the municipalities, cause we have two areas that we provide water to that aren't in municipalities.
But we
We do, it's Carroll County, they're ours.
This is not, yeah, this is not
Bar Hill and Pleasant Valley.
Yeah.
They're ours.
Yeah, this is not, we already
Okay, so, um, I mean, we, 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 we can call it out, the municipalities. I mean, we can say who we're talking about, right?
Yeah, seven municipalities, one some semblance.
Westminster. So Westminster, Union Bridge, uh, New Windsor, Mount Airy, I was gonna say Finsburg.
Manchester, Manchester, Hampton, Tawnytown, West
Manchester and Hampstead and Tawnytown.
Now, yeah, now
Those seven.
Right, and Hampstead's included because they um, provide the clean water, we, the county, provides the wastewater.
Okay.
So, that's why Hampstead's included.
So, so those seven.
If you're doing
Okay.
water, clean water supply projects.
Again, I just want to be clear, as we're ready to allocate three million dollars. So you want to allocate three million dollars for water to those seven municipalities in a matching approach.
Matching grant, yep.
Okay.
That'd be my motion. And I could see maybe taking out of the remaining two whatever million left in this thing.
Well, let, let, let's go over this one first. So three million, okay, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
I understand, I'll second it. Is there any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Cautiously saying aye.
Okay.
Because I don't like putting money out with no details.
Well, so that
I think we should get the details first and then put the money in.
Well, so what I think we'll do is send a letter to the towns saying that we, you know, we've allocated, you know, up to three million dollars. And, you know, let's see which, for this purpose, water supply only, blah, 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 fifty percent match. And um, and, and we're soliciting your, your project, and then you will review the projects and award or not.
And I want to put a deadline on it.
Certainly, when?
Because if not, we're just gonna let this
Well, the money has to be allocated by uh, twenty-four, so we, not that I'm suggesting we go that far.
But I want
Anyway, but we, there are limits by the federal government regardless, so.
Cause this started, cause, cause I agree with you. This started with the conversation we had with Westminster, very specifically
Right.
with ninety-seven in mind and, you know, stretching on ninety-seven.
Yeah, it's just, it, I, I just would have liked to have seen some details first because three million is a, a little drop in the bucket. You, you could, you could potentially do three million just with Westminster, with all that they have. So we're gonna become the, the, we're gonna become the, who gets what?
It can be controversial.
I'm just having a little bit of, I mean, who, does, you know, does Tawnytown get it over Westminster or do they only get
New Windsor.
They only get so much? I mean, we're limiting it to three million, maybe there's gonna be some more money that would come in, which is why I'd like to get the details first, which is why I was not in favor. Um, and then allocate the money. Maybe come, maybe it comes in at four with all seven or something, I don't know. I just don't like putting a figure on it and then we have, that, that forces us to then make the judgment call on who gets what.
I think we can satisfy both and do any appropriate staffing, like for Berta, you said, reaching out to municipalities. And bringing back this motion and um, getting them to define their needs if this was put in place. Because just like this, we had thirty-two million dollars with sixty million dollars of requirements. And we had to figure out, we don't know what their requirements are gonna come back, but I want that, I believe it should be um, uh, with a significant timeline to get them to act on it, uh, and then we can go from there, whether it's three, two, or four, I mean, we don't know, so.
What's an adequate timeline you're looking at?
I would think, I, I know that several of the towns, because they're getting FRF money too, they've all, all gotten some money. Um, some significant, I mean, Westminster got significant.
Yes.
Um, the, um, that they are work, they are focusing on these kinds of projects. Um, so I would believe that they already have this information, that they can readily avail, readily give it to us.
They'll hit the ground running.
So I would say giving them two or three weeks, uh, would probably, I think, three, four seems a little long to me, two seems a little short.
Let's go three.
Okay.
Um
I'll go for twenty-one days.
No, three weeks.
Okay, so by March first, I'll have a response, okay, so
Something like that, yeah.
Um, so with that said, make the motion rescind that last, since we already took a vote on it.
So you don't want to allocate the money, at this point, you want to see the, the stuff first.
I don't, I don't, I voted no, just for the record, because I don't like
You voted yes.
Well, I kinda did, I, I
You, 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 you voted yes.
Cautiously optimistic, yes.
I get your point.
I just don't like assigning a, an amount that puts us in a spot
I understand.
that then
You're putting the cart before the horse, right.
Pitts, Pitts, town against town, I, I just, that's a tough way to do it. And knowing, of course, that a lot of that FRF money, these municipalities are getting already.
Right.
And if they're getting a reasonable amount, then why should we even be involved? Why can't we put that three million towards something else?
Do you want to know how much they've each gotten?
Well, we know, we, we already know that.
I mean, nothing that's
Well, I
Public knows that, it's out there, we, we know.
Uh, no, um, so the, so the, what I know, and maybe others know more, uh, the Congress or our, our senators, when it, when it was first passed, sent us a list of approximates, um, but they, the, um, the, uh, local jurisdictions were capped and they could not get more than, what, seventy-five percent, a certain percentage
Of their last.
of their last year's budget. So, um, that, the, the numbers for the most part were higher, but reported by the um, congressional delegation than they actually received.
Yeah, it's all public record, I mean, that's
Yeah, we can ask them though, cause we don't
I mean, you can get it.
I don't know, I probably can get it, because, yeah, I can probably get it. I can, I can provide that. It was, I think, arranged from about fifteen million in the original for Westminster to about eight hundred thousand for Union Bridge. But I don't know where they landed, but the, the
Okay.
my contacted DHCD, is the guy giving it out, so I'm sure he can provide that list.
And, you know, in some instances, it's a lot of money.
It is, yeah.
For them, it's a lot
So this little matching thing would, wow, it sounds great. We could potentially use against the Stormwater Management Project that we have that didn't get
Funded.
one of these four, it didn't get, I mean, there's four projects here at two point nine.
Come on, Chris, you can show a motion, that was a good thing.
He's happy, he's standing back there.
He, he did a little happy dance just now.
Yeah, and, and the HVAC for the two buildings, that's important, I mean, I, you know
We'd have to take off our bottom line.
We could still do the HVAC even with the three million dollars.
Well, I know, I'm just
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I'm just trying to weigh out the, the, the costs here.
I, I, I just, okay, water is a, is a, in my opinion, a problem in Carroll County. If we want to keep moving forward with some type of development, we need water, I think, we, um, my
Abandon water.
Look at this as a look at this three million dollars to leverage with municipalities, cause that's where the growth areas are anyway, for more water. And if, if they have projects, and they probably do, that they want to put down a pipeline, they'll find, like, put in a pipeline there, then we can help them with that. And it's, it's, you're right, it's not a tremendous help, but it is a help.
Right.
I think, um, you know, there was energy about this one, cause again, Commissioner Frazier and I participated in conversation with Westminster. And this was, oh man, three months ago, maybe, two months ago. Um, and we're like, okay, how can we build on the relationship, how can we expand? How can we expand out ninety-seven? And that's kinda where it all started moving from. But we can leave it as is. I don't think we have to make any further decisions at this point. I think we've gotten what you wanted, and that was the ten million, and looking at others that we wanted to say, yes, let's allocate. And we did that with the five, uh, or four, five.
And nothing will happen to that balance without coming before you. So we're not, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that.
Can you put that in the future fund you had in the next page? But what, the one, what's remaining?
Oh, sure.
Change your, uh, screen, would you?
And I, just to, before I forget, just to.
Future.
That'd be one point, one point four, eight, nine.
Funds for future.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
pandemic response.
Yeah.
Yeah, one point four.
Well. The, the very funds for future pandemic response is, what if this happens again?
Well, it's just, uh, oh.
It's not, it's not, it's not a whole dis.
It's not, it's just a, you know, just to, as a reminder, that we, we, you know, we come before you with emergency responses. Um, and, and just before we leave the idea of water supply, I will, and I didn't spend a ton of time because we didn't have a project that was allocated. There are some guidance, there are some rules around what you can do for future water through the FRF, cause that's not really the intent. So we'll have to look at that and, and then also, you know, a- analyze those projects based on the guidance. And what is allowed, because it's, there's, there's some language around what exactly you can do for future growth and future water supply. So just keep that in mind, that if I come back and, you know, quash a dream, that.
No, I mean, I, I understand. We're allowed to take some poetic license, but not all, so, yeah.
And maybe if it's not too onerous, Debbie, we'll, we'll think about it. But we maybe put that in the letter, so what we get.
We can reference the guidance, yeah.
Has to be eligible proj- projects or.
It does. And there are some parameters around new water supply.
Debbie, do you need anything else from us?
I don't think so.
Are you sure? Do you wanna phone a friend?
Although you did wanna go over real briefly the next, what's coming down the pipe. Yeah.
Um, just, just to, you know, just to touch on what I know about federal earmarks and, um, the infrastructure bill. Um, although I will say, I don't know a lot about how the feds pass a budget, but these both depend on them passing a budget without, you know, they actually have to pass the budget. They can't continue to operate on continuing resolutions. Um, so federal, both of, the information about both of these funding sources has gone out to directors. Um, these are the, I just gave you kind of the general projects that are eligible under federal earmarks. If you'll recall, the sheriff requested the body worn cameras last year. They're still in conversation with the federal delegation. Because the twenty-two requests, since we're still operating on a continuing resolution, have not been funded. So they might, if they pass a budget soon, be in, in play again. Um, otherwise, they'll submit again for twenty-three, the same project. So they're still talking to the delegation about that. Now, infrastructure bill, um, we have some, again, a lot of this is apparently tied to them passing a budget. Some of this funding is not there unless the federal government passes a budget. Um, that said, the guidance has gone out to directors. You know, we've got a, a timeline for twenty-two of when these competitive grants will open and local governments will be able to apply. Just so you know, the kinds of projects, I mean, sixty percent of this was in US Department of Transportation. So there's a lot of capital money for highway, transit, alternative fuels, and you can, you can read the list. Um, hazard mitigation under public safety, and then the broadband. There's two billion dollars in broadband money. A lot of that's gonna come to the state. We might see that in these grants to the infrastructure. They may just put more money to those programs and/or release another allocation. And then we'll be able to apply for, uh, competitive broadband opportunities, middle mile projects, and then cybersecurity. Which I'm a little confused. Some have said that'll be competitive, others say that's coming through the state as well. So we're watching these, um, in the grants office. We look at the federal opportunities that are posted every day. And we'll push these out if we see, um, opportunities that we're eligible for. And I'm encouraging directors too and, and staff to talk to their state partners, you know, money's coming. How are, what are you doing with it? Carroll County is interested in X, Y, or Z, um, with these broad parameters in mind. So I just wanted to let you know what I know about those, um, pots of funding and just to let you know that we're watching them. And, and trying to position ourselves so that we can apply for some of that money.
Pardon my ignorance, but what is middle mile?
It's not that last mile connection too, so it's that backbone, probably other, like Commissioner Wance can explain it better than I.
I got one ear and I got too much.
I can explain it, but I have no middle miles in my district, so. So it, it gets you from the, the road to the, it's the, it's the port, in layman's terms, kinda, I guess. It's the roadway.
To the hookup or?
No, so it's, so, so every, that size mile, every, including Carroll County government. We have X number of miles of our fiber network, right? And then, um, and then they go, that then eventually gets hooked up to like this building, right? But between wherever that, that ring, the closest ring of our fiber network is to the end building, there's a middle mile and then there's the last mile. So the last mile's like getting it to the building. But the middle mile is getting it from the ring to a close point near the building. Does that make sense?
Is that the hoax? It's the roadway to the box is what I was gonna say. That's kinda the middle.
That's the last mile.
No, roadway to the, roadway to the house.
Don't make me work.
The roadway to the building is the last mile. The roadway to the box, wherever that is or to the tower, is the middle mile. That's the latest.
So it's logistics and distribution based.
Debbie, this is good. I think, um, understanding some of these earmarks, like DPW Airport, we've had, been having a lot of conversation about airport lately. Um, understanding what that means as far as funding potential could also, uh, help us out, so.
And, and I have sent to them the specific, so there are specific federal programs that are, that are eligible for earmarks or congressionally directed spending. I will say, not only do they have to pass a budget, but it's incredibly competitive. Cause every congressperson can put forth ten projects across the country. So very, very competitive. Um, yeah, we, and we, so I caution people about that, but I, you know, it's back. We didn't do earmarks for many, many years, so, you know, if we have a project, we should put it forward. But I don't know that you would be able to count on getting it. Um, now, in the infrastructure bill though, I mean, yeah, in the infrastructure bill, there is money for airports. We've already talked to, um, the F, FAA, I'm like, which acronym? About what our, we'll, we know what our allocation is and what we can spend it on. It'll be over the next five years. I think we get close to three hundred thousand dollars a year. So it's not a ton of money. Really, it's not. And it's very narrowly defined on what we can spend it on. But there is money that will come to the airport under that, um, infrastructure.
Okay.
Under that infrastructure bill. Now, are there going to be, see, I didn't see any competitive opportunities though for airports.
Okay.
Um, or I would have listed it here. I don't think I, I don't think I saw. Transit, that's nice, cause all the transit money we've gotten has been operating. So the fact that this is, there's some capital money potentially, and, and we've, I've talked to them about that one too. So we're looking at that. So, we're watching these programs to see if there are opportunities that we think are worth, you know, we're, we're, we, we are doing some grant training across the county, and, you know, the first thing I ask people is to really think about whether it's worth it. It, it's not free money. It's a lot of work to apply for these if it's very competitive and very unlikely. And the project's not, you know, sexy kind of, right? You know, are we really gonna be successful? And should our effort go there? Cause we have limited resources, so.
And there's always potential matching requirements too, or?
Um, yes. And, and yes, absolutely. The, especially the earmarks, cause those are coming through already established programs. So there, there could, there could be matching and they would be different in each of these, um, each of these programs.
And that's a lot to take in consideration when you make that deliberation.
Well, we'd have to come before the board, because that would be unbudgeted match. And so you guys would be the ones to decide whether we would move forward with any of those projects. Any of these, we would come before you.
I'm gonna stand for, is it you I've seen setting a good example at lunchtime, going for a walk?
Oh, I usually do get out and walk every day, yeah.
Very much impressed. I try to encourage as many people as possible to walk. So any of our employees out there, if they wanna get out there and walk and join you, I hope so. The weather will start changing soon.
It was really pretty yesterday and there was no wind.
Well, keep up the good example.
Oh, well, thank you.
And no wind is huge.
It is, especially cause I go, I go, um, I guess, south first and then I wrap around and come north. And it's usually that last, that last little bit that's in the wind.
It's that last mile that gets you.
That's the last mile.
I've seen Administrator Winham walk all the way up to the Arts Council before.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the police vehicles.
Okay, now let's, uh.
Did I, do I need to?
Get the sheriff on and let's talk about purchasing a handful of twenty-twenty-two, Ford Police Interceptor SUVs. And, let's see.
Different ties.
See?
Deb, I'll get this. Please, don't open that.
Go away, yo. Go for a walk. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Okay.
Good to go.
Go for it.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management Warehouse Operations requests your approval toward the purchase of five twenty-twenty-two, Ford Police Interceptor SUVs from Hertrich Fleet Services in the total amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Or thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty, four hundred and thirty-two dollars each. Four vehicles will be used by the Sheriff's Department and one will be used by the Detention Center. The purchase is being made through a Maryland state contract that was competitively bid, and the amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Uh, first off, thank you for the opportunity this morning. This is the last minute addition to the agenda. I appreciate it. Um, reason being, Ford notified us that, uh, ordering for the police vehicles is closing, uh, next week. So we're, uh, here today seeking your approval to go ahead and order five explorers for the Sheriff's Department, as Eli said. Um, four of those five will be patrol vehicles, marked patrol veh- vehicles. One will be fitted as a K-nine unit. The fifth one be, will be used by the Detention Center. Um, and these vehicles are like the other ones. There's a delay with them, uh, six to eight months about when we will receive them. So with your approval today, we can, uh, and hope to see these by the end of summer.
Is there a difference in retrofitting or outfitting the patrol cars versus the detention center vehicle, or will they be the same?
Uh, they will be different. Uh, the next item on the agenda is discussing outfitting those. But yeah, if you, if you'd like, we can discuss it then.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get to it then.
I'll make the motion to the Board of Commissioners, a word of purchase of five twenty-twenty-two Ford Police Interceptors SUVs from Hertrich Fleet Services in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, I got a motion, got a couple of seconds. Any discussion?
No, only one question. Is five enough? Seriously.
Well, this is, uh, this is the, the final vehicles we're looking to purchase for twenty-two.
Okay.
Uh, if you do recall, it was back in July or August, we had ordered about fourteen other ones.
Okay.
So this is, this is just finally closing it out and getting everything that we need.
Cause this is the last chance.
Yeah, it seems like a good price.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because of the way everything's moving.
Oh, yeah, the trucks and SUVs.
Yeah.
The way the delivery is, I just wanna make sure we're ahead of the game here.
Are these, are these on the lot now, or?
No, it'll be about a six to eight month wait until we receive these.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, got a motion, got a couple of seconds. Nothing else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about upfitting these five vehicles.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management requests your approval to use Term Contractor Priority Install LLC to complete the upfitting of three sheriff's vehicles, one sheriff's K-nine vehicle and one detention center vehicle. The amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents includes all parts, labor, installation, and delivery. This purchase is being made through Montgomery County contract that was competitively bid, and the amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be needed.
So the upfitting, uh, in the past has been performed by Priority Install. So with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and use them for these five explorers also. Uh, we are very satisfied with their work and their turnaround time. Um, the upfitting consists of lights, sound equipment, storage compartments, and vaults. Uh, as Commissioner Boucher was asking, there is quite a difference between outfitting a K-nine unit versus the detention center. Um, Officer Brawning's here, he might be able to pro- provide a little more detail.
We'd love for you to elaborate.
The K-nine unit is over top of the regular marked vehicles is about a seventy-five hundred dollar increase in cost. Detention center vehicle is very minimally outfitted. That's why there's such a difference in the, in the cost to outfit the detention center vehicle.
You know, the dogs and inmates can chew on things, Victor.
Possibly.
So the K-nine unit is more expensive to outfit?
Yes, sir. There's an additional roughly seventy-five hundred dollars for all the equipment that needs to be installed in the vehicle plus install.
Okay. Thank you.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the use of Term Contractor Priority Install LLC to complete the uplifting of five sheriff's vehicles in the amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion, guys, second. Any discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
We are now, well, first, uh, Chris, we got any callers?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna go into, uh, open admin and then into agenda review. I have a couple of, uh, items for open admin. The initial item I wanna bring up, uh, is, I believe we are all aware of the, uh, hard work that our county government has been doing, um, and the challenges that come along with it in recruitment, training, and retaining a strong workforce. Um, we have, uh, planned with our intent to provide salary increases for our workforce, uh, beginning one July, the new fiscal year. I'd like to make a motion that we initiate that on the first pay period of one of, uh, March. So we're accelerating it by, um, three months, understanding the, uh, the pay, uh, necessary or the, uh, uh, dollar amount necessary. Having a conversation with, uh, Office of Management and Budget, we can, uh, handle that, um, difference in amount. And, uh, you know, we're just accelerating a decision that's, you know, we're planning on making anyway. So I know it's, uh, long-winded, but that is my motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Is there any discussion on this?
No, the details surrounding it are certainly clear. Uh, you talk about recruitment and retention. Uh, we have over sixty openings right now. Is that correct? Uh, more there about. So I think that's, you know, uh, that's a challenge. Which means that others are working harder and we've got to try to find a way to, uh, attract, uh, people to the workforce. I mean, I, I think salary's just a part of that. And I certainly do agree that, that we can, we can do this, uh, and I think it's a good move. Uh, but on that other side of the coin, I think we really need to start looking at other ways, uh, besides salary and benefits that could be an advantage for folks to work for county government. And, you know, there are things such as, you know, flexed hours, uh, four-day work weeks. I mean, you've heard it all. Working from home. I, I truly think that there, that we should begin looking at that. And we're, we're doing the Siegel study, as most will remember. Uh, perhaps they'll have some of those ideas for us. Uh, but I think it's a great idea and, um, it's only gonna cost us a little bit, knowing, of course, what the definition of recurring is.
Right.
Which sometimes people forget. Uh, but moving this up, as you say, I don't think is, is, uh, I think it's gonna be an easy thing to do and sends a positive message. Might just help a little bit. Somebody's looking to get hired on here. I don't know.
See what Siegel says. Correct.
I have to agree with Commissioner Wance. I think it's due time for us to look at being more competitive and thinking that it will be outside of box. The labor market is changing and that we're in constant competition with the private sector. Unless we, as a government agency, step up and offer our employees the competitive benefits and flexibility that the private sector's offering, we're at a severe disadvantage in obtaining the quality personnel we need to provide the greatest service possible as a municipality to our citizens. So I'm wholeheartedly in, in support of this concept.
So what was the percentage again?
Five to point five.
Yeah, rather not go through the percentages because there's, there's variables. Yeah, rather not go through the percentages, because there's, there's variables.
Okay, I just.
So, no, that, that, that's okay, it's, there's just variables associated with it.
Okay.
But, uh.
Let's just say higher than we want it.
Well, okay, I mean, I know that there was a lot of discussion, that, okay, all right, that's fine.
Um, yeah, just fair to say, it will meet the intent of what we want to establish beginning of fiscal year one July. We are just accelerating it to first pay period in March.
All right.
Um, again, recruit, train, retain, um, show our appreciation for the workforce, and as you know, uh, it's about readiness, and it's about having your firefighters and my service members ready, and, uh, you know, not to be looking for other jobs, not to be looking, uh, over their, over their shoulders, so a large part of this as leaders is to have the best ready workforce. Um, is there any further discussion on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The other, um, Open Admin topic I want to bring up, we made the decision last week to take away the mask requirement, or allow it to be, uh, a personal choice in government facilities, and we made the limitations on a couple of the facilities, uh, like our senior centers. Um, I'd like to revisit that, I don't believe we are in a position, the five of us, uh, to make that decision, because I, I don't feel the expert of who comes in and out of those senior centers, but I would like, um, our assistant services to look at the senior centers, and whether or not they should be now allowing, um, those senior centers, uh, to be open regardless of mask or not. Um, and it's a comfort level.
You want a recommendation from staff?
I would, I would like a recommendation from staff to move forward in opening it, and if the recommendation from staff is that it is, uh, capable of doing that, um, then we should have that effective.
That's fine, I thought we, I thought we tightened it anyway, last week, it said only if you're.
Correct.
Yeah.
In close proximity of playing cards, or whatever.
But, but you know, it, it's, it's.
Everything else was fine.
But, so, I, I agree, so with that said, you know, if somebody's at the senior center, and they're in their mid-sixties, like you or Commissioner Weaver, playing Pea Knuckle, you know, you should have the right mind to whether you're wearing a mask or not. And I shouldn't have to be saying, wear a mask or not. Now, some may have a little bit of memory loss, now I'm not talking about you, but others, and on whether to wear masks. So, with that said, I would like it to be optional at this point.
And they're the most vaccinated bunch.
So, if, if we can just make it clear that all senior centers, just like all county buildings, it is optional and is at the personal discretion of those entering and exiting the senior center.
Is that optional if you're playing Pea Knuckle?
But if you're playing bridge, you have to.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so masks are optional in all senior centers at this time. I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, I used to play Pea Knuckle, uh.
It's a great game.
It's a lot of cards.
It is a great game, okay, is there anything else for Open Admin?
Nothing.
There was a lot of discussion on FRF, and a really good discussion on, uh, FRF, with Debbie. Ms. Wanda, why don't you come on up, and, uh, it's nice seeing face to face, um, let's go through our agendas. Uh, let's see. A early Happy Valentine's Day to you, Ms. Wanda.
Thank you.
On Monday, the fourteenth, we have nothing scheduled, on the fifteenth, we have the advisory, uh, meeting, Commissioner Weaver and I will be attending.
We'll be having that, they were gonna suspend it to March, we'll have to ask this afternoon.
Yeah, you're right, I think they were going bimonthly, so we can find out.
We'll, we'll have to ask.
Yeah, they, they may have moved it to now bimonthly.
We have a meeting this afternoon with this, we'll know.
Okay.
Give you.
Thanks. On Wednesday, um, the Carroll County Workforce Development Meeting, uh, is going to be over at Kate Wagner. I will be attending that, at least in the morning, uh, you know, have some conversation with them, and then on Wednesday, as always, there's the Mako Tax Up Committee, Commissioner Wance, and the Legislative Committee with both Commissioners Fraser and Wance attending, I thought it was virtual, both virtual. Um, Carroll County, uh, the Community College Board of Trustees meeting is at five PM, and Commissioner Wance should be attending, correct?
As far as I know.
Yeah, it's just, you're not on there, but yes, you'll be attending in the Great Hall over at the Community College. And then the ESAC at seven PM, you have an extremely full day on Wednesday. Um, and Commissioner Wance will be attending that on Thursday. We have open session starting at nine, uh, Thursday, February seventeenth. We have approval for the annual plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, Bureau of Housing, um, yeah, Carroll County Bureau of Housing. And then also Carroll County Workforce Development Staffing Plan, Mr. Lyburne and Heather Powell will be presenting. I expect there'll be more added to that agenda, uh, for next week. Friday, we have nothing scheduled, neither on Saturday, and Commissioner Boucher has the podcast on Sunday. On Monday, bless you, uh, we are officially closed, it's a federal holiday for Presidents' Day, Monday, February twenty-first, at six-thirty PM, Commissioner Weaver will be having a town hall at the, who is formerly known as the North Carroll High School. Uh, I take it auditorium, or?
This is at the auditorium, and it's a town hall meeting, a major focus will be on, uh, introducing the, uh, local, uh, citizenry to the, uh, new owners of the school, and let them present what they're doing, the sheriff will be presenting his part, what's doing, and we're going to discuss, uh, issues in the county.
So.
It's more of a question and answer town hall.
That's the major focus, what's the minor focus?
What's what?
Nothing. Okay, Wednesday, nine-thirty, we have, uh, Mako, both virtual again, Commissioner Wance and Fraser will be attending. Um, there will then be at four, I apologize, on Tuesday, February twenty-second, we have the State of the County. Uh, address, which will be held at the Community Arts Center, all in attendance on twenty-second. And start time, we'll find out, but I think it's at nine, but I'm not positive.
No, seven-thirty, isn't it?
Yeah, it's like seven-thirty.
Yeah.
I don't wake up usually. Yeah.
It's like seven or seven-thirty, because they try to do that to get the business community back to work.
Right, I, I think they, they want you there at seven-thirty, they start.
Something like that, we'll find.
Okay, okay, so more to follow on that, but Tuesday, February twenty-second, at the Community Arts Center is the State of the County. On Wednesday, I mentioned the, uh, Mako, at four PM, we have a joint meeting with the, uh, Board of Education. It is an away game over at the Board of Education Boardroom at four PM. Thursday, open session starts at nine, we have, uh, FY twenty-three Annual Transportation Plan. Mr. Casway will be presenting, and then the public, uh, excuse me, the twenty-twenty-three Consolidated Transportation Plan with Ms. Eisenberg, uh, presenting, and I expect more to be added on, on that agenda as well. Friday, Saturday, we have nothing, and I will be providing the last podcast of February twenty-twenty-two.
Good way to close out the month.
What's that?
It's a good way to close out the month.
It's a good way to close out the month, okay, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
We're gonna go to closed for land acquisition.
We're gonna go to closed for land acquisition.
Motion to go to closed for land acquisition.
Wait a second.
Second.
Oh, man.
Aye.
We're gonna close for land acquisition, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you.
Motion to adjourn after closed session.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn after closed for land acquisition, all in favor?
Aye.